Hello, my name is Peter Adams. I'm the Spencer Town Moderator. I'm joined here today with Adam Gardett, the Spencer Town Administrator. And this is town meeting time for the annual town meeting in Spencer to be held this year on May 1st at the Town Hall. We're here to discuss the warrant, which consists of 23 articles. And we're going to discuss the override questions, which will appear both on the warrant and at the town elections as referendum questions. Adam, I think we're going to start with the questions which are presented to the voters. The vote will actually occur on May 13th, as far as the referendum is concerned, but the town meeting action, of course, will transpire on the 1st. So there are two shots at this, and it has to pass in both instances. Would you take us through the three questions that we have?
Absolutely, Peter. Now, the first thing people should know is that these articles are absolutely tied to, I mean, these questions are absolutely tied to articles within the warrant. So there are articles on the warrant that are essentially authorizations for appropriations, authority from the voters to spend money. What the ballot questions will do will basically allow for the town, if these were approved, to allow those appropriations, allow the town to tax additional levy in order to pay for those appropriations. And there's several reasons for that, and I think if people have been following along, understand the difficulties that we've had over the last few years relative to reductions in revenues, reduction in state aid, reduction in some of our finance areas, in addition to some rising costs would have led us to such a gap at the town level and obviously at the school level where there's a request for additional revenue through the form of tax levy. So the first question is, question number one, is for town services. It's in the amount of $484,000. Question number two is a request for additional revenue through the tax levy, an amount of $538,482 for additional assessment funding for the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District. And question number three is, would allow for a borrowing to occur by the district, by the regional school district, for the purchase of computer upgrades. In this case, it's what we call debt exclusion, which would allow, again, for us to tax additional levy to make the payment for the borrowing over a multi-year period. And we'd be able to raise the levy in order to do that. Essentially, what these are saying is there's not enough room in the budget with the existing expenses that we have, with the current revenue structure that we have, to be able to fund all of these things without additional revenue. And we're at a breaking point. There's a lot of history behind here. What I'd like to do is announce that April 23rd, which is a week from last night, a Wednesday, at the Board of Selectmen workshop, I'll be making a presentation. And we've advertised as a public hearing. We'll take public input, people can ask questions and get some answers. And I'll provide a lot more history in detail as it relates to these questions and also the town budget as it's structured this year. But those are essentially the three questions in basic format. One is a request for additional money to fund town services. Question number two is additional revenue to fund additional assessments for the regional school district. And question number three is to fund a computer purchase by the regional school district that they would borrow the money for, and then the payment would be, we would be allowed to increase with tax levy through what we call Proposition 2.5. Just for a quick note on Proposition 2.5, municipalities are capped in a couple of different ways in terms of tax levy, tax structure in terms of taxing the residents. One is we can't increase our tax levy more than 2.5% every year. We have a strict cap. We go by basically last year's number. We are allowed to allow for a little bit of new growth, which is new homes being constructed or additions being built that would come onto the tax rolls. But then above that, it's a cap of 2.5%. The second is our total levy limit, which our total ability, our total tax levy can't exceed more than 2.5% of our total values in town, which is something we don't talk about too much, but most importantly, it's the actual levy limit every year. That second one is the levy ceiling. So in this case, by authorization for these questions, if these were approved, we'd be able to increase the taxes above 2.5% for these particular services that are listed here on the ballot.
When we look at question one, question one involves non-education governmental expense.
Correct.
And you have this broken down into, you know, about a dozen different categories for each of the various departments, such as the Council on Aging and Fire Department, Police Department, and so on, which are stated right in the question. Now, when you do your 2.5 calculation, you know what that number is for new growth because you can estimate that fairly accurately. And you've made an estimate on, based upon the governor's budget and the action by the legislature so far as to how much new revenues we're going to be receiving.
Correct.
And you use these factors to determine your budget for the upcoming year. Now, what you've done in the warrant, I noticed, is that Article 7 talks about $8,370,405 for the non-educational component. And then Article 8 talks about $484,000, which is question one.
Correct.
So you've essentially taken what you know and what you can secure and put that into Article 7, and then what you need to fund the services at the current level, you put into question 8.
Correct.
So I guess the question on the question is, what happens if Article 1 fails?
Great, great question. So essentially, what we have to do is we have to basically prepare for what happens if the additional revenue doesn't come in. So if there's not authorization to increase the tax levy, we are left with just the revenues that we have, then obviously, we can't spend as much as we would need to or would like to in order to provide the certain services that we have. So therefore, the Selectmen and myself, and also department heads in town, went through a rigorous process this past winter and spring, determining, trying to determine which services, which areas, if we didn't have the revenues that we needed to sustain or just maintain our levels of service, where would the reductions occur? So that's what you see in question one, and that's what you see in Article 7. You see a specific, I'm sorry, Article 8. You see a specific list of services tied to specific programs within those departments that if the revenues were not increased, those things would go away. So that is essentially the answer. Article 8, those items that are listed, which include funding for the Council on Aging and the Senior Center, funding at the library, public safety, Highway Department, Parks and Recreation programs, and then Town Hall, if Article 8 is not supported and then question or question 1 on the ballot is not supported, then those specific things must come off of our spending list, which would be unfortunate. But it's certainly up to the voters at this point in terms of what levels of service they would like to have from Town Hall and the government here. And we'll be happy to answer any questions as we go through the process, but at the end of the day, it will come down to these votes.
So those specific areas that are listed in question one, those would be the target areas if there's a failure to appropriate in this?
Correct. The statute for writing ballot questions for overrides requires that you have specific dollar amount, and then it's tied to specific services. So in our case, what we did was we even expanded further on that to be fully transparent, to be fully explain what is at stake here, is we actually had the dollar amount, we have services, and then we have, we broke it down by department in terms of the dollar amount per department. So yeah, yes, we tried to be as clear as possible there. It's the same question on number one at the override, you'll see the same as the warrant article, Article 8. So that being said, Article 7, if that was approved, that would be the remainder of our general government budget. And if that was approved, we could move forward with the rest of our operations for government. But what we're saying is by separating Article 8 out, these items are tied to the override. We still are asking for support for those items. We need those to basically sustain the services that we have, but we're not going to be able to do it without additional revenue.
Okay. Now, as to question two, which is the request to appropriate $538,482 for purposes of supporting the assessment to the town for the regional school district, can you just tell us generally how that number came about?
Sure. And I should, and that's a good segue into the situation that we had occurred, and obviously we had a dire situation last year where there was a funding gap and some other structural gap within the regional school district budget. They asked for support from the town voters for additional money, went through a series of town meetings, a series of override questions, a district-wide meeting, and eventually a decision that came forth by the Department of Education. So the decision that came forth by the Department of Education came at a time so late within the fiscal year, there wasn't time to ask for additional revenue. So when they issued that decision in December of 2013, it essentially was $701,000 additional dollars for funding for the school department that the town was unable to fund through tax levy and other revenue sources. So what we had to do at that time was make some cuts, and we also used some reserves to balance the budget. There wasn't time to ask for additional levy. What question number one is directly tied to that for the town services, because now the state has basically set a threshold, set a benchmark, this is what the regional school district budget is, based on that, this is what your assessment is. And now moving forward, we now have to somehow come up with enough revenue to pay that bill, meet that threshold, or we have to reduce town expenses on the town side. So that's essentially what question number one is. It's, the number's been reduced from $701,000 down to $484,000 with some offset of the Proposition 2.5 levy that we are able to receive, and we hope that's a workable number for folks. Question number two, the $538,482 for Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District, that represents every dollar above that number that was set in December. So within that number, moving forward for this year, there's an increase in the minimum local contribution that the state requires us to pay, there's an increase in the transportation assessment, and then there's an increase in additional local assessment. So all those items together add up to $538,482 in new money that's being requested, new funding that's being requested by the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District from moving from next year FY15 back to FY14. That is the new piece that they're asking for funding for. And obviously, we don't have it, we're not in a situation where we have that money available based on the fact that we're still dealing with the award from last fall.
Last year.
So those two compounded essentially combine into the reasoning for questions number one and questions number two.
Now, question three is also a referendum question, but this is a debt exclusion question, and rather than a permanent override, and can you explain that, please?
Absolutely. So a debt exclusion by definition is tied to borrowing, it's tied to debt. So what we're asking for in this case is if we want a certain project or a certain capital purchase, we'd need authorization to borrow. And then when we go to do that borrowing, what we'd like to do is, for the terms of that borrowing, whether it's a five-year loan or a seven-year loan, what we'd like to do, or other, what we'd like to do is for the period of that time, and when the payment is due, if we could tax additional levy to make that payment. Once that purchase has been paid for, the loan's been paid off, that would come back off of the books, and then you'd be moving back towards your Proposition 2.5. So the question itself relates to a vote that took place by the regional school district. The regional school district voted to borrow $632,000 for specific items tied to information technology, computers, and hardware and software and other items. So when they notify us of that borrowing that's been approved at the district committee level, the town then has an opportunity to act within 60 days of that borrowing through the town meeting process to determine whether or not they'd like the committee to move forward with that borrowing. Okay? So that's one aspect of this vote, is there's a warrant article, Article 20, that is authorization to let the committee at the regional school district move forward with a borrowing. What we've done in Spencer is basically said, because of our financial situation, we're not able to take on an additional debt payment without additional levy, and that's why it's a debt exclusion. East Brookfield could do it a different way if they had room in their levy, and they felt that they could make a payment on that loan without additional levy, or could do it within their, with their proposed revenue structure, their 2.5 limitations, they can do that. This is a choice that was made by the Spencer Board of Selectmen, with obviously relating to questions number one and two and the deficits that we have, you know, another payment on top of that is just very difficult for us to absorb without additional levy. So that's why you see in Article 20, you'll see, as allowed by statute, Article 20 in the warrant, which authorizes the borrowing, is contingent upon us being able to have approval at the ballot. So if the ballot does not approve the debt exclusion, then technically, that counts as a nonapproval of the borrowing, and then the regional school district would have to consider another option.
And the question has to pass in both East Brookfield and in Spencer?
The article has to pass, the warrant article has to pass in both communities. The question does not have to pass in either community. Well, I should take that back. Because we've tied it together, it has to pass.
So Spencer requires approval at the town meeting?
Correct.
And approval on the referendum question?
Where East Brookfield would have to approve it at town meeting, and then it's up to them, it's their option whether or not they have a question on their ballot to do the same as we have.
Thank you. All right, let's get into the warrant. We have 23 articles this year, and first article is an article which cleans up expenses from the prior year and involves transfers from free cash. First of all, generally, what is free cash?
Sure.
How much do we have, and how are we going to apply it in this question?
Sure. So free cash is essentially, and some of the private sector may know it as retained earnings, we also refer to retained earnings with our enterprise funds, but the free cash, it's not free. What it is, it's money that's left over from the budget that you had before, the prior year. So in FY13, for example, we had a $20 million budget. If we only spent $19 million at the end of the year, then you have $1 million in free cash. And then following that year, you're allowed to do several different things with that. You can apply it to operating expenses, which you try not to do. You can make capital purchases, you can put it away in different stabilization accounts, or you can just let it roll over and then continuously, in a retained earnings situation, roll over, so you have a positive balance. So in our case, fiscal year 13 ended last June 30th in 2013. Then we do what we call a year-end closure of all of our books and all of our balances. We are audited at the end of the summer in September, and then we have an undesignated balance or unspent money that we then will apply to the Department of Revenue for approval, in which time they will come back with a certification of free cash, as they call it. So that certification last year came in at about $850,000, okay? So that's a combination of money that wasn't spent in different departments, that was a combination of extra revenue. And in our case, we had, you know, some unexpected additions to the levy, we had some major projects that came online that provided some additional revenue, we had some turnbacks from some different department budgets, and then we had just a little bit more of state aid that helped out. And then in town of Spencer, we've primarily used that money to do exactly what we're going to do here in question one, which is to balance shortfalls in existing fiscal year budgets. And then we've also used that money to apply to our capital program. We don't have any budget line items in our operating budget set up for capital purchases or capital spending. What we do is we wait till the end of the year, figure out what we have for certified free cash, department heads come forward with a list, or in our case, we do have a 10-year plan, have an idea of what items, whether it's a new fire truck, a new police cruiser, repairs to different buildings, they'll put in for requests. We have a capital committee that prioritizes those requests, and then based on what we have for funding left over, we'll determine what capital purchases we make. So when you come to the town meeting, you'll see in the back of the book that we have our capital plan listed in terms of that process that occurred this year, and how it correlates to our spending requests for certain purchases within the warrant. In terms of our free cash balance, we had $850,000, but then, of course, we had to balance the books in December, at special town meeting in December 5th, to cover the shortfall for Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District. So we took 400 of the 850 and applied it to that, to that bill, if you will. That left us with $450,000. At that same town meeting, special town meeting in December, we had an article to spend $25,000 to purchase turnout gear for the fire department, which was much needed. We had outdated equipment, some expired, so we absolutely had to address that situation. So that leaves us with $425,000 moving forward to this town meeting. So again, we have a couple of things that we could do with that money. We could make capital purchases, we could balance certain accounts, or we could let it roll over and become retained earnings or free cash next year. In our case, we had a severe winter. We ended up spending $200,000 more than our originally budgeted $175,000 to handle all of our snow and ice events this year. So that $200,000, we're requesting to come out of reserves, the free cash reserve, and then be used through the authorization of Article 1 to transfer to the operating budget so our books would balance at the end of June 30th. What we're saying is we currently have a shortfall in that line item. We do this transfer, we'll cover that. In addition, we have a couple of other shortfalls, one in Parks and Recreation, and a third in General Liability Insurance. So that $207,704 would come out of that $450,000, which would then be used to balance the books this year, and that would leave $243,000 or so left for spending on capital projects.
Okay, very good. Article 2, Article 2 is a housekeeping article. We do this every year. We establish revolving accounts. We authorize the Selectmen enter into contracts. We authorize the treasurer-collector to enter into certain agreements for financing, waiting for tax revenues. And we set up these revolving accounts for the Planning Board, the Suggen Block, and Parks and Recreation. And I noticed this year, we have two additional ones. One is the Council on Aging, and the second one is for stormwater management. In my mind, I think the most question would be is, what stormwater management?
Sure.
And why are we spending money on this?
Absolutely. So in 2003, the United States Environmental Protection Agency issued what they call an MS4, or Municipal Stormwater Permits, for all the communities in Massachusetts, and also throughout the United States. In Massachusetts, we are what we call an MS4 community. We have an urban downtown area with a collection system that collects stormwater. So that's our catch basins, our piping, our drainage culverts, and then eventually, that stormwater collection system will then discharge that water eventually into a stream or a river such as the Seven Mile. So what we're obligated to do is we're obligated to make sure that when the water comes out of our collection system, stormwater collection system, and it goes into the rivers, that it's not detrimental to the river, it's not detrimental to the ecosystems and the life and the water quality. Therefore, we have to do certain things. We have to, you know, obviously sweep streets, we have to clean catch basins, but and over and above and beyond that, we have to do things such as try to target and eliminate what we call illicit discharges. Illicit discharges in the case where actually sewer water or wastewater is actually being connected into your stormwater collection. Stormwater obviously being rain events or groundwater overflow, so make sure that that's not compromising the water quality. So there's different things that we need to do. We need to, in 2003, as part of those permit requirements from the United States EPA, you had to, you know, locate all of your stormwater collection system components, your catch basins, your piping, and your culverts, and do all of those things. On top of that, establish certain programs and protocols on town buildings and town properties for when stormwater landed on your property and then eventually left the site. What was the quality of water? So we would have to come up with certain plans and orders or certain infrastructure changes on our sites to make sure that the water quality was adequate. So as they're moving forward this year, in 2014, they're expected to issue a follow-up to that 2003 permit, which now has additional requirements over and above and beyond what was already done. So in preparation for these new permits that are going to be coming out, that we're obligated to do, and we actually have conditions that we need to comply with, failure to comply with those conditions can result in fines to municipalities which have been issued by EPA. So we're trying to avoid fine structure, we're also trying to do our part to maintain the water quality in the community. And then obviously, the water quality that leaves this community, you know, rivers don't know town boundaries, they eventually could go into other communities, and we want to make sure that we're doing our part. So in preparation for this permit, over the last couple of years, we've been working with 29 other communities in a 30-town conglomerate coalition, if you will, to try and head off some of these things, work with consultants, try and do those things in an efficient method in terms of make sure we're not reinventing the wheel in every community, using economies of scale and hiring consultants or doing water quality activities. So however, that will only get us so far. We will be required every year to do certain things. We have to, you know, provide mapping, GIS mapping, we have to, then we have to test the water in every possible location of our collection system, every outfall, every area where it's dipping into a river, we have to test the water that's coming out of there. So the money that we have, it's been very hard, difficult, it's been very difficult to get new money or new spending into town budgets, and not just Spencer and all towns, to head off this mandate, if you will. Certainly a mandate, and it's unfunded. So towns have really struggled at trying to get themselves into compliance. It's one of the reasons why we created our 30-town coalition. But moving forward, there's only so much that that coalition can do with grant money, which we've been able to receive. But moving forward, towns are going to really have to do some work on their own. So what we've tried to do is establish what we call a revolving fund, such that we do have a new stormwater bylaw that you must comply with when you're doing construction and new projects. So the fees that are collected from that new permit, fees that come in from any fines where people violate the terms of the Environmental Protection Agency requirements such as, you know, illicit discharges going into rivers or other, fines and fees that come in will go into this account, and it's an account that we then could then take money out and then spend to help further our stormwater management program. So in this case, we're not asking for new money from folks. We have a new permit, people pay that permit, new fine, and then is being used for a specific use. So it's a small way to, it's not going to get us to where we, you know, completely fund our program, but at least it's allocating a specific funding source, however small it may be, to certainly target this program, which if you do not fund this program, you're certainly liable to meeting the wrath of EPA.
And these are, you know, demands or requirements that are not going to go away. They're just going to stay with us for the foreseeable future.
Absolutely.
And many other towns I know from my own experience are having catastrophic problems with compliance. So this gets us on the right road, and that addresses some of the concern I had. Some people asked me about.
Yep.
Why are we bothering with stormwater?
Sure.
It's somewhat similar to the Americans with Disability Act. We ignored that for 10 years, and we paid the price for that. So we're trying to avoid that situation. Thank you, Adam.
Yep.
Article 3, Article 3 is an annual article which establishes the salaries for elected officials, which are the Selectmen, myself, and I see I'm getting $160 this year. Thank you. The Board of Assessors, the Treasurer Collector, the Town Clerk, Water Commissioners, Sewer Commissioners, and Board of Health. State law that says that you can't pay these people if they're elected unless the town meeting approves their budget. And I noticed in here, you have an increase in both the Town Treasurer and the Town Clerk, which I understand to be 1.3%, and that's in line with the recommended increase for other non-union personnel in the town.
Correct, correct, correct. We have a personnel board in town, and they essentially review the Consumer Price Index for this region, and then recommend a 1.3% increase, which correlates to that CPI index. The only ones that we've changed here are the Treasurer and Collector and the Town Clerk. The other ones, we try to change periodically. You know, we're not going to change, unfortunately, Peter, $160 to $161.60. What we're going to do is typically, we'll increase those $25, $50 increments over so many years. The Town Treasurer Collector and the Town Clerk are essentially department heads. They're elected positions, but they work 40-plus hours, they act as if they're on salary. So this may appear to be a stipend, but it certainly is a salary position. We structure it that way in terms of our budget, even though they're elected positions, they're department heads, they oversee staff, they have certain statutory requirements that they must adhere to. We align them, and any increases with non-union personnel, we try to match that up. So that is why the recommendation is 1.3% for them as well.
Article 4 deals with the personnel bylaw, and the personnel bylaw actually sets forth the salaries and hourly rates for non-union personnel in the town and various step increases that they get. And this is adjusted every year by the Personnel Board. And I understand that the only change in here is that they've all been increased by 1.3%.
You're exactly correct. So this covers all non-union positions, folks such as our library employees, our accountants. So this covers all non-union positions, folks such as our library employees, our Council on Aging Director, lifeguards. We have some part-time dispatchers at the police department, our on-call firefighters, and other positions such as the tree warden and the veteran agent. So yes, they all have been increased by a factor of one, one point three percent.
Article five, Article five is the regional school budget. This calls for appropriation of, I'm not sure what the total amount of money is, but it involves the operating assessment, transportation, debt services, and capital assessments, and additional local aid. And it's contingent upon the question two approval for the override.
Correct. So what we did was, again, we talked about it earlier, why this is contingent upon an override, and how it ties to the ballot question override number, question number two. And what we tried to do here, and which is a change from what was done in the past, it used to be essentially a lump sum number. What we tried to do is break it out so people could really could see where the assessments were going to in terms of tying it to the regional school district budget. We certainly have had a lot of information over the last year and a half in terms of how their budget is structured and in terms of where the funding goes. So you can see four different locations where the taxpayer's money would go to apply to the assessment. Section one is the minimum local contribution. That's a number that's set by the Department of Education. Item number two, which is a request for regional transportation, bus transportation. The third section is any debt or capital assessment, previous building projects. And in this case, it is tied to Wire Village, the debt payment on Wire Village, which was funded through a debt exclusion. And then Article four, I mean, section four on this question, which is the additional local assessment, which is, in this case, is about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars higher than it was last year. The minimum local contribution was an increase of over two hundred thousand. And then there was a slight increase to the second part of the transportation. So those total five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-two amount that's higher than last year.
And that includes the amount that was appropriated in December
Correct.
under the
Correct.
demand of the state for the additional seven hundred thousand dollars.
So that essentially, in terms of the Board of Selectmen, that set the threshold or the benchmark in which the Department of Education says this is where your budget really should be. And then obviously, we have assessments tied to that budget, which is our portion of funding that in addition to other revenues that they may have, such as Chapter Seventy state aid. And then we're now, when they have issued a new budget or voted a new budget for FY fifteen, we see what the increases are over FY fourteen, realizing that we have a funding gap based on that decision that happened in December, carrying over to this year. That's why there's a request for an overall, Proposition Two and a half override referendum question at the town election.
So if the town meeting approves Article Five, it then also has to approve Question Two
Correct.
on the referendum questions. And if either one of those fails or both fail, then you're going to be in a situation, again, we'll be in a situation with the meetings, with the regional school committee, district meetings, and so on. We could be involved in the same situation that we were last year, up until the end of December, trying to determine what the school budget is
Correct.
and what the town will pay, so.
I think people will typically ask if we approved this Article Town Meeting, you know, why does it need to be approved at the election? Or if it wasn't approved at the election, but I approved at Town Meeting, how come it still wasn't approved? It was already voted on. Well, they do two different things. The warrant article, the question in the warrant is essentially an appropriation. It's an authorization to then take money that you collect and then appropriate for a particular use. So you're getting approval from the voters to pay a certain bill out of the money that we collect. The question on the ballot for the election actually allows us to get authorization to increase that amount of revenue so that we can then pay for the appropriation that would be approved at Town Meeting. So they do two totally different things. One's an appropriation, one's an authorization in terms of how you fund that appropriation or ask or request for additional money to fund that appropriation. So that's why these two are linked. We're basically saying we can't pay this bill unless we get more revenue.
Good. Article six, Article six is something new for the town. This is the restaurant meals tax, which represents three-quarters of one percent additional tax on your meal when you take your bride out to dinner. So if you spend a hundred dollars on that, you're going to have to pay another seventy-five cents in tax. That money will come to the town. Doesn't sound like much money, but you've gotten some estimates on this and what it will generate.
We have, the Department of Revenue, well, let's take it back. Back to two thousand and ten, the state adopted a local options tax in the form of a meals tax. And prior to that, there was, you know, the restaurant, I mean, prior to that, there's the hotel tax, and some towns have that. So in this case, the Town of Spencer did not go forward yet, or has not gone forward yet, with a request to the voters to basically exercise that local option that the state legislature allows towns to adopt if they so choose. So in this case, we now approach a breaking point in our revenue structure and our funding system where we have certain requirements in terms of expenses. We have certain services that we like to fund or that people feel that we should be funding. There's a gap there in terms of the revenue and expenses. We've talked about funding them through overrides and additional tax levy. The Finance Committee members actually submitted a petition article, spearheaded a petition article effort in which they would get this question on the warrant, Town Meeting warrant, which would then ask the voters for another option to help fund that deficit gap. In this case, through the point seven-five additional tax on meals. So the Department of Revenue keeps track of an estimate of, if the towns were to adopt it, what that amount would be. They essentially, when restaurants in town, they have a button on their computer that's the six point two-five percent. So when you buy a hundred dollar meal at a restaurant, they have the six point two-five percent. It's calculated, they send it off to the Department of Revenue, a certain portion of money related to that six point two-five percent. And then in this case, if the point seven-five were added, so essentially there's now a seven percent total, that money goes to the Department of Revenue, and the Department of Revenue would then funnel back the point seven-five percent that was collected back to the towns for our use in our general government. So they're already keeping track of the six point two-five, the Department of Revenue at the state level. So they know if point seven-five was added to that, what the estimate would be for the towns. So going back to two thousand and ten and up to two thousand and thirteen, we've ranged between ninety-five thousand and a hundred and twelve thousand in terms of an estimate of what the collections would be based on the six point two-five that they're collecting. So with that in mind, the Board of Selectmen, when they structured the following questions related to the general government budget, and they structured the question on the ballot, they took into account what, you know, this additional tax, if it were passed, as being, you know, if this were adopted, if this was passed, this would offset some of the overall impact to the community and to taxpayers, because not only are you as a resident, when you go to a restaurant here in the community, paying that point seven-five, but everyone else that comes from out of town comes in, would also be paying that point seven-five. So in essence, you have a greater pool or a larger population, people from outside the community, coming in and through this tax, supporting your town government, however, you know, what is about a hundred thousand dollars estimated per year in a twenty million dollar budget. The outsiders are certainly not supporting the whole entire budget. We have to do that through our real estate property tax and other revenues. But, and the Finance Committee saw it as a way to help offset, or in their eyes, it may have, in their eyes, and some of the concerns, it may be used to fund additional things in the budget that aren't being paid for right now. But the selectmen use this as a tool to lower the override. The override was originally, for town services, going to be five hundred and eighty-four thousand. They felt that once this was on the warrant, it made sense to support it, to support it through a reduction of the override amount by about a hundred thousand dollars. So now the override request, as you see in the ballot, is four hundred and eighty-four thousand.
So we're already taking advantage of something we haven't gotten yet.
We haven't had the approval yet.
That's good.
So however, they felt that if we were going to ask for additional tax levy and ask for an increase in terms of a local options tax, shouldn't we apply?
Don't hike a hundred thousand.
We shouldn't be, in their eyes, in the five-member board, it's like, we shouldn't then use that as additional revenue to add things to the budget. We should use that additional revenue to help lessen the pain, if you will, the taxpayers.
Article seven is the question which ties into Question One, which is the additional four hundred odd thousand dollars, which will be needed for the town budget. And again, this is specific as to the various departments. And it will, if this doesn't pass either here or on the override, then you're looking at a four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar reduction from your town departments.
Right, well, Article seven and Article eight, it's not normal for us to do this. Normally, we have one article. It's the town government, general government budget article, and it's tied to the budget that's in the back of the warrant packet. So in the back of the warrant packet, there's a couple, about fifteen or so sheets in which outlines the general government budget for the community and overall budget for the community. It shows all of the revenues that we obtain, it shows all of our expenses, all of our assessments, including schools and other. And then it goes through the different line items of each department, you know, how much do we spend on police? How much do we spend in the treasurer-collector's office? How much do we spend at highway, et cetera? So you'll see in the back of that, the warrant book, that you'll see the town is proposing to spend about eight point eight million dollars this year. But what we've done is because we have a funding gap, and because we know we have to pay a certain portion of the regional school district budget, we have to account for, if that gap is not filled through the override, then we can't spend the full eight point eight million dollar budget that we want to, what we're proposing to do. We will have to reduce that by the gap, which is the override amount, the four hundred and eighty-four. So Article seven represents that eight point eight five four million dollar budget minus the override request, four eighty-four. So this article can stand on itself, and if it's approved, is not contingent upon the override. And then starting on July first, we could move forward with a certain level of service, a certain level of programs and expenditures being authorized, and our town government will move forward. What we're saying is in Article eight, the part that's been taken out of that, we need those things. However, we cannot have those things unless we have additional revenue through the ballot question. So it's a little abnormal this year in that we've separated the total general government budget into two different articles, where in the years past, when they have been contingent upon an override, we haven't had to ask for an override to fund general services. You've only seen one article, it's approved, we move forward in July one. In this case, if Article seven's approved, we can move forward with that portion of spending. Article eight, we can't move forward with that other specific line item portion of spending without the ballot questioning of being approved on May thirteenth.
So Articles seven and eight, then we'll fund our non-educational town government.
Yep.
Now, the budget is on the town website?
The budget's on the town website, the warrant's on the website. We also have some other materials on there that's related to the service reviews that we've had over the past six months or so. And in addition to that, I have the presentation that I'll be walking folks through next Wednesday, April twenty-third, at six o'clock at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. That presentation is online now. So our website is www.speçerma.gov. So if you want to look at that in advance of, that information in advance of the public hearing next week, in advance of the town meeting on May first, or in advance of the election on May thirteenth, please do so. If you have any questions, my email's on the website, or just stop by Town Hall, we'd be happy to help you answer any questions.
And I would urge all voters who are going to both be at the town meeting and going to the town elections, and all voters in general, to take a look at those numbers and see what's gone into it. When we get to the questions on the town meeting floor, we will not spend a lot of time going through line items. I mean, you're going to be presumed to have taken advantage of the various shows and publications and the onsite, the online material to familiarize yourself with the budget.
Right, there's an extensive process that goes back to Thanksgiving of last year till now, where department heads are providing information, submitting information, analyzing budgets. We also have Finance Committee public hearings and other such. So there's a long process that goes. So you're correct that we don't spend a lot of time making a new presentation in terms of, you know, what software is the accountant purchasing this year? How many pencils is she purchasing this year? You know, how much paper are we purchasing this year? That's all been presented in those series of formats, they've been on TV, the information's on the web. So what we do is when we get to Town Meeting, we have an overall general discussion in terms of how all of those pieces fit into the big number, and then how do we fund those numbers? But you're correct, we don't spend, going through a thousand or more line items within a town budget within every department. However, if someone does have a specific question, we'd be happy to answer it. You're just not going to see a new presentation on every penny that's being spent.
Articles nine and ten relate to the Water Department and the Sewer Department. Every year, we appropriate money to fund their budget. That money is paid back to the town from receipts or from any surplus that's in those respective departments.
Correct, the Water and Sewer Department, they go through a process of evaluating their revenue structure, their expenses, and then they set their rates based on the revenues that they require to bring in, to pay for their respective departments. They're separated into enterprise funds. Enterprise fund is a fancy word for basically an accounting method, which we take those pieces out of the general government operating budget so that we can better track the inputs and the outputs, the money that's coming in, who's using it, and then tying those specific usage to specific budgets. And it's completely withdrawn outside of the town's general government budget, non-school budget. However, Town Meeting does authorize those expenditures through this format.
And Article eleven, Article eleven involves the Bay Path Regional Vocational Budget for the upcoming year. And the amount, our assessment this year is eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. Any comments on that?
What I can tell you is that our Bay Path Vocational Regional School Budget is up about eleven percent. One of the reasons for that is our enrollment is up at Bay Path. So I think they've gone from a hundred and twenty students to a hundred and thirty-three proposed for next year. So despite the fact that it's going up eleven percent, we're spending more money, I think about seventy-eight thousand dollars more than we did last year. They're not charging us any additional local assessment. So it's strictly the minimum that they're allowed to charge. So you're basically, that is why this budget, even though it went up eleven percent, is not tied to an override. This is the bare minimum. If we were going to be a member of a regional school district, this is what you need to pay for it. And these are the breakdown of the costs. You know, the reason we're not asking again for an override is this is as low as you can get. And if you don't fund this, you don't have a program, so.
And we made the decision years ago, we were going to be a part of that program.
It's certainly been beneficial. I think as most folks know, that we've been very satisfied with the educational output that comes out of there, but also the communication between that school and ours. But in the end, it was certainly a financial benefit for the Town of Spencer to, rather than funding all of its vocational students through what you're going to see now in the next discussion of Article twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, where you're paying separate transportation costs and separate tuition over and above and beyond. Certainly being a member and buying in, if you will, we had a capital buy-in, we had to buy into the Bay Path membership. We weren't one of the original communities. We've only been in it for about eight years. It certainly has been a financial advantage and certainly allowing us to control our vocational costs.
So we're essentially servicing a need at a significantly lower cost than we would if we were tuitioning these students
Correct.
to other districts.
Absolutely.
Now, let's talk about twelve, thirteen, and fourteen together. These are things that come up year after year, and these are tuitions and transportation costs for students who can't find a particular program that suits their needs within our system. Our system being the school here in Spencer and Bay Path Regional Vocational. In this case, we have Smith Agricultural High School, we have Norfolk County Agricultural High School, and we have Tantascor Regional High School. And each one of these things involve programs that these students are concentrating in, which are not available to them. And as I understand the law, this is our obligation, period, end of story. We have to pay this.
Correct, correct. I, as being a part of the Bay Path Vocational Program, they offer thirty-five programs. I believe that's the number, don't quote me on that. But I believe they offer something like thirty-five, everything from, you know, obviously, the traditional ones, the automotive, the carpentry, HVAC, and then some of the newer ones that you'll see. Now you're starting to see business, and you're seeing computer, and nursing, and other programs. But they can't offer all a hundred and twenty, or whatever it is, programs that are potential programs for students to attend at a vocational school. So when that program is not offered at Bay Path, or in a rarer case, if a student wants to attend a certain program, but it's full and there's not enough capacity for that student to attend that program, they're allowed to apply to other vocational schools. And if accepted, then the town, not the school district, regional school districts, the town is then responsible for the portion of tuition that's set by the Department of Education and transporting that child from their house to the school. And in this case, we have, we're going to have five students this year. And in this case, we have, we're going to have five students this year that have been applied and been accepted to other schools. And then we will, meaning our obligation through these approvals of having those kids attend those schools and then transporting them there. We do receive slight amount of reimbursement from the state in terms of chapter seventy and transportation reimbursement, but it's certainly not what it would be if it were to either Spencer East Brookfield or to Bay Path. And that's why you've had, we've seen a lot of discussion at the finance committee level, selectmen level and myself, in terms of some of the issues that we're having with these. We're not opposed to, folks that are involved in that process, we're not opposed to free education, open education, education opportunity, but we are certainly having difficulty with accepting some of the financial obligations, the mandate that the state has put without some of the state's help in terms of trying to address the situation, so.
So in effect, the state will not help us a whole lot on tuition and they help us some on transportation.
Correct.
For these students.
I mean, just for sake of discussion, you know, in some cases, you're spending as much as forty or fifty thousand for one student to attend a school district that's not in your member of, where in some of the member districts, you're spending, you know, five, six, seven thousand dollars after state aid to send these kids to school. So it's certainly quite a disparity in terms of the cost. And it's certainly in these days and the economic times we've been through, it's certainly a concern when you're trying to fund all the other things that you are within a budget.
And it's magnified in these times.
Absolutely.
Article fifteen is our only capital expenditure so far this year. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the town hall boiler and replacement of an oil storage tank, underground storage tank.
Correct, correct. We did go through an extensive capital process. We had over two million dollars worth of requests. We certainly can't fund all those with the, with the structure that we have and the free cash that remains. So the most pressing need that we have certainly is at town hall. We have other pressing needs, you know, we certainly have fire trucks and communications programs and other things that require different departments, but we've had multiple failures of the heating system at town hall this past winter and other past winters that it's just become, it's becoming cost prohibitive. We have shut the building down at times. It's becoming convenient for obviously the people that work there, but also the people that want to access the building when there's no heat and, you know, obviously the winter that we had. And another time, something was magnified. So this would allow us to replace that boiler, which is over, I think it's approaching thirty years old. Certainly replace that, replace the machinery, the pipe work and the fixtures associated with that, and then remove the underground oil storage tank because we were working with National Grid to actually tie us into municipal gas, or it's not municipal gas, but tie us into gas within the street, which is now accessible at Maple Street, across the street from town hall. So we'd be working and partnering with them to provide the infrastructure to the building. And then this would allow us to fund the upgrade of the infrastructure within the building.
And hopefully at a lesser cost for maintenance also.
Yes, yes, yes. We, you know, as most people who've done it in their homes, you know, you, the technology that's there today in terms of energy efficient boilers, in this case, gas powered, you know, obviously with new standards, new efficiencies, we hopefully would realize the savings over time. So it's certainly an investment that we feel is well worth it.
And maybe the clanging from the pipes will go away at the town meetings?
I don't know, we'll miss those clanging. That means the heat's working.
Article sixteen is a request for nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, which is being transferred from an existing account to fix stair treads in the town hall.
One of the ways that we've tried to fund capital projects, and this is a rather small number relatively speaking, a twenty million dollar budget spending nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, but we do have cases where if we approve a certain capital expense, such as we did just previously with Article fifteen, and there's any unleft money in that account, it cannot be used for anything else until we get town meeting authorization to transfer it out of that account and use it for something else. So in this case, we do have a need. We have some money already reserved for town hall stair tread resurfacing, making repairs. If you've been in the building, you know that they're, they're certainly in need of an upgrade. So this is not new money. We're not asking people to increase their taxes. We're not taking any of the two and a half allotted tax levy this year to apply to this. This is leftover money in the library roof repair account, which was approximately sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars. We spent all but nine hundred and thirty-two dollars of that. We'd now like to take that money out, put it towards the expenditure at town hall.
Article seventeen is a water department capital plan request. It calls for authorization to use two hundred thousand dollars of retained earnings for something called a capital efficiency plan.
Right. So the, as we've, we've used the term free cash for, and then linked that to capital purchases for the town. Side with the enterprise funds that we have with water and sewer, their version of free cash, again, is called retained earnings. It's basically unspent money from the year before or money that was collected over and above and beyond what they thought they were going to collect. They now can use that for capital purchases or other things. With the water department, what they've been doing over the last few years is trying to improve the system itself. Certain areas are outdated, they want to make sure it's as efficient as possible, and obviously that helps keep rates down, having an efficient, updated system. So they're going to take two hundred thousand out of their two hundred and twenty-five thousand in retained earnings and use it and apply it to system repairs on what they call a capital efficiency plan. So they have a plan that they hired a consultant to put together that basically says, when you have money and you're going to fund a certain repair, these are the things that you should be doing. These are your priorities. And so that's, that's why it's called a capital efficiency plan. It's not, if you go look at their plan, you'll have certain segments and certain projects within that, but we don't explain those in this as much, saying, you know, thirty-two thousand for Water Street and seventeen thousand for Pleasant Street. It's, it's all part of their plan and then the water commissioners will then determine how that money is spent. But again, this is not going to be, this funding is not coming from new money, new user fees that they're, that they're raising or additional tax levy. This is a reserve account that they're utilizing to spend on capital.
And Article eighteen is the sewer department and the same thing holds true there.
Exactly, same thing.
They're looking for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for upgrades to the system.
Right.
Again, from retained earnings.
Yep, they have a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in retained earnings and they're going to use a hundred and thirty of that for funding repairs and upgrades to the system that includes things that need to be done at the wastewater treatment plant within the collection system and pump stations.
Article nineteen concerns a request to use twelve thousand dollars from overlay surplus to relist and revalue taxable personal property. Overlay surplus is money which is left over after the year ends for money previously set aside for abatements.
Correct.
And we use that for various town functions. And this one relates directly to the assessing department.
Right. With the assessors, obviously, everything they do and when they determine what your tax bill is going to be, it's tied to values. So we have real estate values, we have building values, land values, and in this case, there's also something that is taxed and it's called personal property. So it's the items within a commercial or industrial facility, the equipment that's in there, that all gets assigned a certain value and then there's a certain tax associated with that, for that business. So what they need to do in order to properly and to accurately figure out what the value is, they have to go through a process of valuing everything or updating, relisting and reevaluating all of those, the personal property. You may have new businesses that come online, people get rid of stuff, they add stuff. So, so that it is current, they're going to request that they take twelve thousand dollars out of their surplus account. Again, no new revenue, no new levy being asked. This is a surplus that's tax related. As you mentioned, abatements is going to be used for a tax purpose.
And I don't have to worry about the assessors coming in and assessing my television for a hundred dollars, you know? This is strictly commercial and industrial.
Correct.
That's a relief. Article twenty, Article twenty is the debt exclusion item, six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for essentially a computer upgrade for the schools, which we've talked about before. And again, this ties in with question three, has to pass both ends. And this particular question, each article also has to pass in East Brookfield.
Correct. And in this case, again, so this, what this article does in the warrant, it basically either allows the district to move forward or not to move forward. It's basically an authorization. It's the town's chance at having a say in whether or not they move forward with a borrowing. And in our case, we've crafted an article, is over and above and beyond that, the funding of this borrowing would have to occur through the approval of question three on the ballot.
Article twenty-one is a request to sell town land. This is twenty-two hundred square feet or twenty-three hundred square feet at the Highway Garage, which will be sold for value per appraisal by the selectmen, and I believe it's to an existing restaurant.
Correct.
Which is on the site.
Correct. The town was approached by Charlie's Diner about essentially squaring off their lot and approached us and we have, you know, property at the Highway Garage along Meadow Road, if we'd be willing to sell off that land. And when we're selling off land with the community, we have to go through that appraisal process. Essentially, a third party reviewer will come in and set the value of that, and then we're, we both parties should, must adhere to that, that value. So this gives us authorization to sell town land.
Article, Article twenty-two and Article twenty-three are for so-called pilot programs. Pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. These are for solar farms, so-called solar farms, which have been proposed. And if they are in fact constructed, this will ensure that the town receives a guaranteed income for a period of time, which I believe is twenty years.
Correct, correct. So, so again, these projects have not been built yet, they're being proposed for development. And if they were eventually constructed and once they were complete, they would have certain values that would be coming under the tax books. And these allow us to set, they're basically tax agreements, basically agreements that are set. We set, in some cases, they're set values, in some cases, they set dollar amounts. And Department of Revenue is moving in the direction of setting values. So we'll negotiate the values of these projects over the course of the twenty years. And based on those agreements in terms of what the values would be, the developers or the owners of these facilities will be responsible for paying the tax as it's applied by the rate to those values. So these are very common these days, solar panel farms in Massachusetts and other parts of the country. And these agreements are very common. And we did one last year for the site on Wilson Street, which is up and running now.
And we've also done others which never got up and running, so.
We've done others that haven't.
There's no guarantee.
Correct. And we have other ones other than solar panel farms. We have one with Senior Living and Paudy has one. So it's not uncommon that, you know, the towns will go through these, this process, but we do need town authorization in order to provide these structures of tax payments from the developers.
And that concludes the warrant. So here we are. We can probably call this show me the money, which is what we're going to be doing this year. It's a big concern in a lot of towns to get enough funds to run their governments, to run their schools. And it's your turn to decide at the annual town election, at the annual town meeting, as to how we're going to go about doing this. Town meeting, May first, seven o'clock. We'll try to get that meeting going right at seven. You should be home in time to see a rerun of Law and Order, if we're lucky. Town election, May thirteenth. You have the referendum questions, you have important town elections. Please participate, come to the town meeting and exercise your right to vote. Adam, thank you very much. Your thoughts are great.
Thanks, sir.
And I appreciate the work you do in behalf of the town. Thank you and good day.